Good evening. At this time, if you would please silence your cellphones, please be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the entrance, and if you do so, please present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. So at this time, I will call to order and convene the City Council and City Council as Housing Successor Agency to the regular meeting for December 11th, 2018. Welcome. Our invocation tonight will be given by Father Anthony of Christ the Redeemer Church, Catholic Church. And our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember-elect Jeff Allen. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Let us pray. God, our Father, we, your children, give you thanks and praise for your graciousness to us. We glorify your holy name, for you are great and marvelous. In this very moment, we, the lovely people of our great city of Grand Terrace, have gathered together to invoke your blessings upon our community. In a very special way, we humbly ask you to bless all those whom you have chosen to serve our community in various distinguished capacities. We pray for our elected officials, beginning with the mayor of our city, Darcy McNaboe, the council members, the clerk, the legislative branch of Grand Terrace, the attorney, prosecutor, auditor, and all others directly involved in the administration of our city. We also pray for all those who work in various capacities to ensure a smooth functioning of Grand Terrace City. In this regard, we remember members of the police force, the firefighters, the medical personnel, teachers, parents, and all your children. Lord, we pray that you bless them with tremendous health of mind and body. Bless them and their families with your divine protection. Above all, we ask you to fill them with wisdom, patience, kindness, tolerance, and compassion. Through their generous and dedicated services, may our city continue to make tremendous progress in all aspects of our life. We also pray for our leaders, both at the state and national levels, that you imbue them with the same selfless spirit with which your son, our Lord Jesus Christ, died to save all of us. Lord, fill all of us with your blessings and help us to always worship and adore you, the one true God. We make all our prayers through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please repeat after me. Follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Anthony. Thank you, Councilmember-elect Allen. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item of business is the Declaration of Results for the November 6, 2018 municipal election.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Tonight before you is staff report for the Declaration of Results for the November 6, 2018 municipal election. This staff report supports all adopted goals of the City Council's 2030 vision and supports all adopted core values. The City of Grand Terrace consolidated with the San Bernardino County Register of Voters on November 6, 2018, for its statewide general municipal election for the positions of one mayor, one four-year council member, and one two-year council member. In accordance with Elections Code, which requires the City Council adopt a resolution reciting the fact of the election and declare the results not later than the next regular scheduled City Council meeting following the presentation of the canvas of returns or at a special meeting. The San Bernardino County Register of Voters completed the official canvas and issued the certified results on December 6, 2018 as follows. For the mayoral race, candidate Sylvia Robles received 1,721 votes. Candidate Darcy McNaboe received 2,233 votes. Candidate Darcy McNaboe received the majority vote and has been certified as mayor for the City of Grand Terrace. Councilmember four-year race, candidate Doug Wilson received 2,355 votes. Candidate Greg Batla received 1,349 votes. Candidate Doug Wilson received the majority vote and has been certified as council member for the City of Grand Terrace. Councilmembers two-year race had candidate Jeff Allen receiving 1,600 votes, candidate Kenneth Henderson receiving 1,149 votes, and candidate Jeffrey McConnell received 1,096 votes. Candidate Jeff Allen received the majority vote and has been certified as council member for the City of Grand Terrace. At this time, staff recommends the adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, reciting the fact of the consolidated municipal election held on November 6, accepting the official canvas and official statement of votes cast from the San Bernardino County Register of Voters office and declaring the results. That ends my staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll move the item, ma'am.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles, second by Councilmember Doug Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Henderson, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you very much. Our next item is a special presentation. Before I go on to special presentations, though, I do want to thank the Girl Scouts who came and left us these wonderful gifts. Please raise your hand if you were part of bringing us these gifts. Thank you very much. Mr. Henderson, the special presentation is for you. I personally want to thank you for your year of service on this council and your work as part of this council. We have for you a nice memento, and I would like the opportunity for us to have a picture with you and have you hold this. Would you like to make your remarks first, or would you? Okay. Please do make your remarks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a privilege to serve the City of Grand Terrace residents. I've enjoyed it immensely. 2018 concludes my 38th year of public service in one form or another as a staff person, a city manager, and appointed City Council member. I look forward to the future. I look forward to Mr. Allen's service to the community. I have every belief and confidence that he will do very well with his colleagues on the City Council. I've communicated that to him as well and wish him the best. It's impressive to see those in the audience tonight. Those of you who know me know that civic engagement has always been a significant part of my tenure here as a staff person and as an elected official, so it's wonderful to see the support for the City Council and for Mr. Allen in particular, for all those present tonight. I want to thank my colleagues on the City Council, starting with Mayor McNaboe, and the remaining council members. I've enjoyed working with them significantly on thorny and somewhat controversial issues from here from time to time, but that's why you get paid the big bucks, I guess. It's a challenge, but it's one that I embraced along with my colleagues, and I believe that the future is bright for Grand Terrace, and I hope that we are in a position in the not-too-distant future to realize that promise. So thanks, everyone, for their support of the democracy in action. I've talked about that from time to time. We saw it. Certainly, I would have preferred a different result, but I respect the results. This is what we support in our country, in our community, and I look forward to a bright future for the City of Grand Terrace. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I almost don't want to touch it, but I want to bring it out because it's beautiful. And so this is our recognition. Thank you for your service, Mr. Kenneth J. Henderson, and if you would, please, let's get a picture with the council members. Mayor Protem.
Thank you for collaborating. It was a difficult year, and a lot of things were discussed that needed to be discussed. And also, you know, there's, as you're a role as a city manager, you did a great job in getting Louis in play, and hopefully we'll see the benefits of that.
Councilmember Hussey.
Well, Ken, it's been a heck of a year. You know, I enjoyed every minute with you, you know, time at League of the Cities and stuff, and I was joking around. Thank you for your support when I asked you for stuff and going out there, you know, I know the campaign was hard, and you did well. I know it was a different side of the tracks you're not used to, you know, being on there, running the campaign. Midterms elections are always, well, harder, you know, besides presidential elections. We don't get the voter turnout, but, you know, the voters made their choice, and I'm sure Jeff Allen's going to do an outstanding job on there. But it's been a blessing working with you and your knowledge and your experience and your support and your camaraderie, and you're a man of integrity, and I appreciate that. I got a little parting gift. It's a pen for you, because the pen is mightier than swords. I don't expect you to be silent, sitting back there in your house and stuff. I expect you to keep going, but I'd like to present this to you. Said, "I wish you and your family all the blessings, and God bless, brother."
Councilmember Wilson.
Ken, it's been a good time. It's, as far as I'm concerned, it's always an opportunity for all of us to be around intelligence. And intelligence and faith is what you brought to this council, and I greatly appreciate your willingness to serve, and I know that willingness isn't diminished. So again, thank you.
And I will say one more time, thank you again for the year that you spent with us, the willingness to come forward, to serve you, this city, the time and effort that you put into this, the thought. I really appreciate it. It shows your desire to have the best for our city, and I really appreciate that, and wish you and your family the best as well. Thank you so much. All right, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is installation of officers and oaths of office. I will turn this over to the city clerk at this time.
At this time, I would like to call Jean Obawa and Mayor-elect Darcy McNaboe to the lectern for the taking of her oath of office.
Thank you, ma'am. How are you doing? This one?
It's on.
I state your name.
I, Darcy McNaboe.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support and defend the Constitution.
Support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemy.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion and.
Or purpose of evasion and.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am.
Upon which I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you.
At this time, I would like to call Councilmember Bill Hussey and Councilmember-elect Doug Wilson to the lectern for the taking of his oath of office.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Doug Wilson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And I will bear tr- I'm sorry?
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
Allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I'm about to enter.
That I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to call Rebecca, Councilmember-elect Jeff Allen's daughter, and Councilmember-elect Jeff Allen with his family, to the lectern for the taking of his oath of office.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jeff Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasions.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
At this time, if I could have Mayor McNaboe, Councilmember Wilson, and Councilmember Allen stand in front of the dais, I'd like to secure your signatures on your oath of office and present you with your certificate of election. Just want to congratulate all three of you for your successful campaign and ask for your seats obviously in the council. Congratulations.
Is this ready to go? This is ready to go. Thank you so much to all of you who are here tonight to witness the swearing-in of our elected officials for this City of Grand Terrace. This is really the best place to be together for the future of our city, and I wanted to say a few things before I hand the microphone over, and I'm going to start with, thank you to anyone who has ever called me and complained about an issue in our city. And I say that seriously, because when a resident takes the time to actually call an elected official, even if it's just to say, "Point me in the right direction. Which staff member should I talk to?" Or, "Who should I talk to about this?" The minute you make that call or send that email, that helps us to make a better city. And so I encourage you, each of you here, to please encourage your neighbors and your friends, that if they have an issue, to say something to city staff, and if they don't know who to speak to, to reach out to an elected official and ask for guidance. I know that the city staff in this city, they come to work every day wanting to do a very good job for the residents, and they can do a better job when they know if there are an issue that the residents have. I want to thank each and every one of my supporters that helped me during this election. It means so much to me, your support, those of you that took the time to walk your neighborhoods and talk to your friends and neighbors, and thank you so much to my husband for his support. But most of all, thank you to all of you for continuing to care about your city, and a special thank you to the Girl Scouts and the troops that came tonight with their gifts and their troop leaders. Once again, thank you, and I congratulate Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Allen, and I will hand the microphone to Councilmember Wilson now.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank all of you that have attended and all those who are watching on TV. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve in local government. This marks my 25th year in doing so, and hopefully, God willing, this is not my last years. I believe strongly in freedom, and I still believe that this is, as local government, your last bastion of freedom. So I highly regard it, and I ask God's blessing upon all of you. Thank you.
Well, it's certainly a lot different, coming to a council meeting and being on this side of the dais than the planning commission. There's people out here when it comes to council meetings. And so I know that we have a long agenda tonight, so I don't want to take a lot of time, and I just want to say thanks to those who came out to support this event and those who supported my campaign for this office. I especially want to thank my family. It wouldn't have been possible without any of them. The proofreading, the, you know, reining in my comments, keeping me under control, keeping me on the straight and narrow path of the, you know, and so I thank them very much for that, and I wouldn't be here today without them and for coming here. And I'd like to thank Mr. McConnell for being here. So with that said, let's have a meeting. Shall I move in?
So the first act of business will be, the council is in recess for seven minutes. At this time, we will reconvene our City Council meeting to open session. Our next item is the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. I do have a request that item eight be removed. Are there any other requests to remove items from the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles, second by Councilmember Doug Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Okay. Item eight is the planning commission appointment. And I have a request to speak on this item. Mr. Jeremy Briggs.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Yeah, just while I went to the recent meeting this last Thursday, and I am understanding there's an open position, resigned spot coming in, and I feel I'd be a strong candidate to apply and take on this position. I would love to be a part of the growth of this neighborhood and this community, whatever makes it better for my family, my friends that have been years in this neighborhood, and this is where I feel I could be strong. I have years in background in transportation, construction. I could be there hitting the ground running. I just wanted to put it out there that I am definitely interested in this position. Like, I came last council meeting. I want to be involved. I want to help out everywhere I can, so I just wanted to announce to you guys that I'm here, my hand up, ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. We'll make sure that you are part of the application process.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that the council direct the city clerk to advertise for appointments to the planning commission and accept applications and schedule interviews. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item E, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff to questions raised, or items may be agendized for a future meeting. Are there any requests to speak during this time? Thank you. We have Christine Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Christine Scott, and I'm a Public Affairs Manager for the Southern California Gas Company and your local representative for the city. As I'm sure you know, SoCal Gas distributes natural gas to the residents of Grand Terrace, allowing residents to warm their homes, have hot water, cook meals, and dry clothes efficiently. Some residents also use natural gas for barbecues, fireplaces, your pool, pool heaters. Natural gas is an economical, safe, and very reliable source of energy and brings comfort and convenience to our community. The employers in your city also rely on natural gas to cook meals at restaurants, pump water, irrigate fields, and many other industrial applications. As I mentioned, natural gas is affordable, abundant, and an energy source of choice in homes and businesses for many purposes I just stated. It's a balanced energy portfolio that our community enjoys. I am here tonight to raise your awareness of an ongoing issue in California about which many people are unaware of. California wants to upset this balanced energy portfolio, which the residents of your city and, in fact, all of California enjoy and want. California wants to electrify everything. A proposal which did not pass the legislature this year would have required all new buildings built in 2022 to be all electric and would have required existing buildings to be retrofitted to be all electric by 2030. While this proposal didn't pass, you can be assured that more proposals will be coming. And it's happening now while most people aren't paying attention, and this is why I'm here to talk about this evening. Think about how much you pay for electricity to cool your home in the summer and how little you pay for natural gas to heat your home in the winter. Imagine even paying higher electric bills year-round because you're forced to heat with electricity, cook with electricity, and do everything else you do with gas now with electricity. The proposals to force to electrify your home are being made in the name of global warming, reducing greenhouse gas, carbon emissions, and other environmental goals. These goals are admirable, but a cost-benefit analysis and an environmental analysis don't justify actions. Sorry. I will leave some information for everyone, but I'll leave my business cards, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may, congratulations on becoming city councilwoman for Rancho Cucamonga.
Our next speaker is Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. Bobby Forbes, 11-850 Burnes Avenue, Grand Terrace. I'd like to say thank you for decorating the town for Christmas with the decorations up on the lights. It looks a little bit festive, but I would like to make a request that in City Hall, will you please turn some lights on in the lobby area? It's so depressing in the daytime. I know when you're in your offices and you're sitting at your desks that it looks okay, but when you come in, you just go like down a notch, like you feel like you've climbed in a cave. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but it's like that all the time. So today, when I came in about four o'clock, it was really bad. You just barely could see where you're going if it wasn't for the Christmas decorations. So I'm glad for the Christmas decorations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. And if that's the last item that I have, so I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications. And we'll start with Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I haven't been to any boards or commission meetings yet to report on, and so I will just say thank you for your kind words to me on taking the seat, and I have some large shoes to fill, so I'm going to be quiet and listen.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. First of all, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and that you enjoy your time with your family. A couple of things I want to thank the tree lighting committee and everybody else who put that together, I mean, with the contingency plan of bringing it inside the church. Seems like we've been batting a thousand on our celebrations here. It's raining, or it's too hot, or the wind's blowing, but, you know, it was a beautiful event. Everybody enjoyed it. I really liked it. My granddaughter didn't know too much about Santa Claus, so she kind of ran away from him. So, but it was a great event, and, you know, it was just really pleasant seeing that and seeing all the residents come out. The band's good. I mean, the whole community just got together. I really enjoyed it. One other thing, the veterans event, it was great. As a vet, you know, it makes me proud when we do stuff like, you know, recognize the veterans and bring it in. Unfortunately, you know, I got a disappointing letter from a disappointing veteran, and I just want to apologize for them not being recognized from the city, with the city officials. So basically, you know, the veterans ceremony was a great job. You know, I was proud of it. The committee, they did an outstanding job on it, the Veterans Freedom Law Committee. And fortunately, you know, something got overlooked, and I think this was part of the fault of the city, and that was to recognize the veterans that the city officials recognized and just acknowledged their names. So I don't know what we can do to fix it, but just apologize for that. I know as a veteran, you know, we, a lot of us went in when we were really young, took our oath of office when I was giving Mr. Wilson his oath of office. I took mine at 17, and you'll never forget, when you go to boot camp, you never forget your drill instructor. And, you know, we're older now, but if our nation called on those veterans, we'd definitely go back and do what we have to do. But I just want to apologize to the veterans who weren't recognized, but I want to congratulate them for having their name on the Freedom Wall and for having their city officials recognize them for that honor. So once again, Merry Christmas to everybody and happy holidays. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, I am also thankful for the opportunity to gather together and to celebrate the Veterans Day and all of the arrangements that were made. It is staggering to me to think that so many had to sacrifice so much for our freedom, and so it should be so valuable. Should be, it should be so valuable. Also, I enjoyed the Christmas thing. I don't know, maybe we should put it in the church each time if they'd be willing. I thought it was really neat, except for the lunch part would have been a little bit tough. Of course, we couldn't do the skating rink, but I greatly appreciate the staff and the way they have performed flawlessly. You know, it's not easy to be at work and continue to be at work and cater to the social needs of the city, and they have done a great job. And starting with the city manager on down, really, really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Silvia Robles.
Yes, I'm going to try to go quickly through this because of the length of the agenda, but also, too, got the veterans letter, and it was a great event. My only criticism is that we, as a city, invited all these people to come, and it was kind of a little bit uncomfortable to see all these, some elected officials, like the Mayor of 29 Palms, and they looked kind of, you know, weird, like, where do I sit, you know? And as if we're going to do that, I think we need a tighter rein on some protocols. Maybe, not you, but some other politicians could talk more briefly when we're doing something like that.
Does that mean I get free rein to say how much I want?
And also, you know, Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Hesse has said that we should contract our city manager out for any places that need rain, and maybe we can make some recreation money out of that. I also want to report out on the last Omotrans board meeting. It was kind of a lively meeting because I've been a little bit frustrated that ridership is down all over California, and it seems that we're unable to get the executive board staff and the CAO to recognize that we need a dialogue on maybe some of the duplication of efforts between SBCTA. As far as governance issues, you have a mix of mayors and council members on Omotrans, and then you have SBCTA, which is another mix, and there seems to be some issues of having some consistencies of who's at the table having this discussion. And it makes it even worse when you have elections because people that were at the table learning or beginning to participate, if they lose, they're not back. So I think, you know, my main thing is I want to see a bunch of benches that is a shared responsibility between cities and Omotrans, and I feel, you know, that's something that I'd like to do, and I don't have to be on the board to do that. Also attended with staff, the annual economic conference at SCAG, and I'm going to wait to talk about the particulars of that when we're not so pressed for time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will say that I, too, enjoyed the veterans' event. I had a council member, excuse me, I had mayor from Rialto single me out. She called, she saw me at SBCTA, wanted to let me know how much she enjoyed the being included in the event and that they were able to recognize one of their veterans. And so I think that's just a reflection on what a nice idea it was for us to reach out to the surrounding cities. So thank you very much for the effort that went into that. The, on the 20th, I met, Mr. Duffy and I met with our Assemblymember Reyes. She wanted to make sure that she had an opportunity to hear what our priorities were going forward since she was headed off to Sacramento. She wanted to get some information in prior to budget time, and so we went over what the council project priorities were when we talked about not only those that were moving forward to spend bond proceeds on, but our whole list of project priorities that we had. On the 29th, we had our tree lighting, and again, the committee of volunteers that put that together did a phenomenal job of decorating. I've been hearing numerous comments from people that have passed through town and have seen their handiwork and just how wonderful it was, so I thank them for all their effort. I know they started months before the event. And thank you also to staff for the time that you put into that. On December 5th, I had a SBCTA meeting. We started with a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, anticipated litigation, and a public employee performance evaluation for the general counsel. In open session, we approved an amendment to a contract with AECOM for technical services for engineering, services for plan specifications and estimates for that particular phase of the state Route 60 Central Avenue interchange project. We also approved the changes to Guidelines for Transportation Development Act. Article III funds for bicycle and pedestrian transit stop access projects. So we also authorized staff to release a call for projects for this particular Transportation Development Act. We conducted public hearings to consider condemnation of interests in real property required for the Interstate 10, the I-10 corridor, Contract 1. This is the express lanes projects that they're doing, and so this is in the cities of Montclair, Upland, and Ontario, and so we did adopt these resolutions of necessity to move forward. We elected officers for the remainder of this fiscal year. The president of SBCTA was James Ramos, and he was elected to Assembly. So we do have another friend in Assembly, even though he doesn't represent our district, but that did leave an opening for president of SBCTA. And I really want to say how humbled I am that the SBCTA board nominated and elected me to finish out his term as president. And also, serving as vice president, we have newly elected mayor of Colton, and that's Frank Navarro. Frank Navarro and I have been working together at SBCTA, and I think that that's just going to make things even better for the relationship between the two cities when it comes to transportation issues. So I wanted to congratulate Frank Navarro on vice president. And we also approved the Interstate 10 corridor contract plan for finance. That was a federal financing for the express lanes. And that will, that will end my report, except to say Merry Christmas to all of you. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the selection of mayor pro tempore, item number 14.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Debra Thomas, city clerk. This item before you is the selection of the mayor pro tempore, and the staff report supports all adopted goals of the city council's 2030 vision and supports all adopted core values. Following the regular municipal election date held every two years, the council selects one of its members to serve as mayor pro tempore. Government Code Section 34905 provides that for cities with elected mayors, a mayor pro tempore must or shall be chosen in the manner provided by Government Code Section 36801, which provides that the city council shall meet at the meeting at which the declaration of the election results for a general municipal election is made pursuant to Sections 10262 and 10263 of the Elections Code. At that time, they'll install an elected official and choose one of its members as mayor pro tempore. Government Code Section 36802 provides that the mayor shall preside at the meetings of the council. If she is absent or unable to act, the mayor pro tempore shall serve until the mayor returns or is able to act. The mayor pro tempore has all of the powers and duties of the mayor. Therefore, in the event the mayor is unable to perform her duties, the mayor pro tempore will perform those duties in the mayor's absence. The City of Grand Terrace Council procedures also establishes duties of the mayor pro tempore in a similar fashion as previously stated. At this time, it is staff's recommendation that the council select amongst itself a mayor pro tempore from a member of the city council who is not directly, I'm sorry, the elected mayor. The term of office for the selected mayor pro tempore will be for two years until the next regular election. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions at this time? Okay. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And I believe, Mayor Protem, you wanted to be recognized on this?
Yes, Mayor. I've had this two terms. It's time to share this position, and I'd like to nominate Doug Wilson.
I'd like to second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Allen.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Wilson voting yes. Current mayor Protem voting yes, and the mayor voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item six, oh, 15, which is the appointments to boards and commissions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Debra Thomas, city clerk. Before you is the mayor's appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. The staff report supports all adopted goals of the city council's 2030 vision and supports all adopted core values. The City of Grand Terrace has the opportunity to participate on various boards, commissions, and committees as a member of various municipal organizations and associations. Historically, these assignments are reviewed every two years following the regular municipal elections date or as necessary. In general, law cities where the office of mayor is an elective office, the mayor with the approval of the city council shall make all appointments to boards, commissions, and committees unless otherwise specifically provided by statute. Additionally, contact was made with the various boards, committees, and commissions to identify which of those mandate the mayor serve as delegate. After review of those that have bylaws and inquiries made both verbally and via email, it has been determined that none of those particular boards, commissions, and committees on the attached lists mandate that the mayor serve as delegate. All that is required is that the mayor or council member selected by the legislative body as a whole serve as delegate and/or alternates. To assist council in their discussion for the reorganization, attached is the city's list of boards, commissions, and committees, and their established time, date, and place of meetings. At this time, staff recommends that, subject to the advice and consent of the city council, the mayor appoint representatives to fill both the delegate and alternate positions. That ends my staff report. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So we'll just go through our list that's in our packet, and I have a question for you, Councilmember Robles. On the Administrative and Finance Committee for Omnitrans, is that something that you were appointed to because you were on that commission? Is it something that...
Is it tied, yeah.
Is it something that you become because of your service on that board?
Yes, when you're on the Board of Directors, you're asked to at least pick one committee to participate in because they do the detailed work that advances.
And so that wouldn't necessarily be for us to appoint at this time for the Administration and Finance Committee? Is that true?
Oh, well, no, it's not necessarily that committee. It's when you go there. I think other than the executive committee, you pick one that's of interest to you.
Okay, so tonight, we'll just look at the Omni-Trans Board of Directors. And so you and I had a discussion and you said that you are ready to perhaps not be in that role?
Yes.
Okay. And based on your remarks about perhaps having transportation under the same, the same representation, I will, I would like to serve on that. Councilmember Hussey, did you want to continue to be the alternate?
No.
No? Okay. Mayor Protem Wilson or Councilmember Allen, would you like to be an alternate?
I'm pretty unfamiliar with, with the functions of it. I am open to being an alternate or a primary delegate for any of the committees, actually.
Very good. I'll put you down as the alternate for Omni-Trans.
Okay, I'll be the alternate for Omni-Trans.
Thank you. Okay, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, I am currently the representative to that. It is actually an annual meeting for the representative, but I have since become elected to the executive committee. So I would like to continue on that. But, but the alternate is up for, for a discussion. I know Mayor Protem Wilson and Councilmember Allen have expressed an interest in the alternate. Is that something that you would like to continue on, Councilmember Robles?
No, I'm open to, to someone else taking that.
Okay.
I can take that one.
Okay. So we'll make you the, the alternate on that, Mayor Protem Wilson. So you are, I'll let you know when the annual meeting is. Okay. And then League of California Cities in Land Empire Division, I have Mayor Protem Wilson and Councilmember Allen have expressed an interest in that. I did not hear from Councilmember Hussey on that.
No, it's fine.
Okay. So Mayor Protem Wilson will have you be the delegate and Councilmember Allen, you'll be the alternate. Colton Joint Unified School District Community Cabinet, Councilmember Hussey, did you want to continue on with that? Okay. And Councilmember Allen will have you be the alternate. And I think with that one, you can both go to those meetings. Southern California Association of Governments, General Assembly.
Someone else should get to do that.
Do you want to be an alternate?
Sure.
Okay. Mayor Protem Wilson, do you want to be the delegate?
I can do that.
San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, I am ready for another commissioner if, if one so presents themselves. And I think Mayor Protem Wilson, you said you were interested in that?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there somebody that would like to be the alternate?
I'd like to do that.
San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, I'm going to continue to serve in that capacity since I have just been recently elected to president.
And I'd like to stay the alternate.
Okay. You may do so. All right, alternate is Councilmember Robles. San Bernardino County Solid Waste Task Force. I think I had to twist Councilmember Hussey's arm to do that one last time. Will you stay with it?
No.
All right, is there somebody that is willing to serve?
I don't mind with that one.
Okay. Councilmember Allen. And is there somebody willing to be the alternate? Nope, we'll leave that vacant. Okay. San Bernardino County Gang and Drug Task Force, we had Councilmember Henderson there. Councilmember Allen and Mayor Protem Wilson have been interested in that. Councilmember Hussey, are you still interested in that?
I am interested.
Okay, so you want to be the main representative and an alternate?
I can be the alternate.
Okay. Council, or Mayor Protem Wilson will be the alternate. All right. Do we need a vote on that to, to move forward? Okay. So is there anyone willing to make a motion on what we just discussed?
I move the mayor's appointments and representatives to various boards, commissions, and committees for council approval.
All right, second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. And Mayor Protem Wilson has another commitment tonight. So he will be leaving.
I apologize, Mayor. I am going to be, I'm going to be the Grinch at a Christmas celebration, which seems typical for me. So that works out well. Thank you.
All right.
Well, now you're the Grinch, Mayor Protem.
I will move on to item 16, which is professional services agreement with K T G Y, Architecture and Planning. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. This item, as indicated by the mayor, is a professional services agreement with K T G Y, Architecture and Planning. My name is Sandra Molina. I'm the Planning and Development Services Director. This item does support our 2030 mission, vision statement to promote economic development, as it will provide a conceptual land use palette demonstrating feasible parcel sizes and site design so that the properties can be properly marketed and for sale in development. On October 9th, city council meeting, the council approved a priority project list for the use of bond proceeds and have prioritized the purchase of the housing property, and I'll show that in a minute, and reconfiguration of those parcels. And so this particular item does play into the item that will come up on item 17. But, so this is on the south side of Barton Road. Here is McDonald's and here is Miguel's, just to orient folks. And this is the professional building. City of Grand Terrace owns this parcel here. It's about 1.9 acres. And the Housing Authority, acting as a housing successor agency, owns these properties here. And so these properties are part of the city's Midas program, and so they are available for sale and development. And the city manager has received interest over time on the properties, but more recently has been receiving interest for the purchase of the north half of these properties. The north half is more desirable, given that it has frontage, but because these properties are so deep, we wanted to ensure that if we were to consider selling just the northern half, that we keep a remainder parcel that will allow us to support feasible development if, for the future. And so staff did send out a request for proposals to planning and architecture firms to help us with that process and through the preparation of a land use palette. And so they would provide us a conceptual site plan for the north half and the south half, and give us an indication of what size we'd need to support development. The scope of work would include ensuring that there's shared access between the north and the south half, but that the north portion, when that, that is plotted out, is that there's access, access would be provided through this assisted care facility. This is a signalized intersection at Barton Road and Canal. And this project, when it was approved several years back, does have requirement to allow through access. And so when these sites are plotted, the access would come through this, through this intersection here. But we are, the scope of work would show three commercial pads, assuming at least one drive-through. And on the south portion, would have a large pad for a commercial office or hotel and two smaller commercial pads. And so that's the scope of work. K T G Y would provide a plotting. This is a lot more intensive than, than this, the area that we're talking about, but they would plot it similar to this, where they would have pads and parking and drive aisles and such. And so the proposal that came back is for a total amount of $18,500. The purchase and sale, excuse me, the professional services agreement, that's part of the packet, is subject to the city attorney's and city manager's approval. The scope of work for the, assuming one revision to the, to the initial concept and then to our final concept is 13,500 for that scope of work. But our, the consultant also indicates that sometimes that there's outreach requested, or we might have some more revisions to those plans. And so if that's the case, then we added the contingency, which totals the 18,500. Staff is proposing that we use the general fund 2011 bond proceeds to pay for this contract. And the recommendation also includes, excuse me, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with the consultant. Also, we have attached a resolution approving the expenditure of the bond proceeds. And so this would conclude staff's presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any comments.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right, seen none. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion or discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a professional service contract with K D, K T G Y Agriculture and Planning, amount of 18,500 for the agriculture and planning services, subject to the city attorney and city manager approval. Appropriate 18,500 from the general fund 2011, bond proceeds balance of the count of 10955-80XXX for K T G Y. Authorize the city manager to execute the contract and make any amendments necessary to complete the project. Also adopt the resolution by the city council and the City of Grand Terrace approving the expenditures of the bond proceeds, the contract for agriculture and planning services.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hussey and a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes, councilmem, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Wilson is absent.
Thank you. It's going to take some practice, isn't it? All right. So our next item is a housers, Housing Successor Agency and a city council item, the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the Grand Terrace Housing Authority. May we have a staff report, Director Molina?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. This is a purchase and sell agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the Grand Terrace Housing Authority on behalf of the Housing Successor Agency. And there, there's quite a number of recommendations that's included in the staff report. There's, there's up to, there's seven of them. But that's because we do have two different entities making independent actions. So this particular item does support our goal number three, to promote economic development. What is being proposed is that the city council and the housing authority enter into a contract for the City of Grand Terrace to purchase these two adjacent parcels on the south side of Barton Road. And on October 9th, the city council did approve this as a priority project under the priority project list for the use of bond proceeds. The previous item, the talk about the land use palette that would be prepared to demonstrate how these properties could be developed. This item in particular, what the council would be approving is to enter into the, excuse me, the council and the housing authority would enter into contract for the purchase. But there's also a proposal to use the bond proceeds in the amount of $650,000. So back in 2016, appraisal was done that valued the two housing authority properties at $650,000. Staff did contact the appraiser to ask about the value of the property two years, approximately two years later, and indicated that the, that the value is substantially the same of what was appraised in 2016. We are asking for an appropriation of $665,000. If, in the packet, we indicated that once the sale and transfer of properties completed and are owned by the City of Grand Terrace, we would also process a lot reconfiguration to take those three parcels and make them two parcels. And so that process to have a survey or prepare those documents, we are including that cost in the $665,000. And then there's also going to be title transfer costs. And so that totals 665. The housing authority will also have some costs related to transfer of title. And so we're asking for an allocation of $5,000 from the housing fund. The purchase and sale agreement anticipates a 90-day escrow. And with that, I would ask that the city council and the housing authority acting on behalf of the Housing Successor Agency approve the recommendations contained in the, in the report. And I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Okay, seen none. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council and the agency board for consideration of a motion. Mr. City Attorney, do we have to vote twice on this? Once as the board and once as the council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember and Boardmember Robles.
Okay, so how, are we doing this versus the successor agency?
You make the call.
Okay. Okay, I move the adoption of a resolution of the city council of Grand Terrace, approve an expenditure of 665,000 bond proceeds for the purchase of housing authority property. This is.
Okay.
So this is approve on behalf of the City of Grand Terrace, the agreement for the purchase and sale of real property between Grand Terrace Housing Authority and the City of Grand Terrace, and the purchase of housing authority property. That's awkward.
Mm-hmm.
Where are the two items? Are they two written out or two? There's just one. Okay. So I'm going to need a little guidance on this. There's one item. So to do it, is the city council member?
Did you make the motion up for a second?
I think you're going to do one, two, three, four.
Three.
Five.
Five and seven.
Six and seven.
For the city council, right?
For the city council.
Okay, so one, three, five, six, and seven.
One, three, five, six, and seven. Okay. I move recommendations, items one, three, five, six, and seven.
On behalf of the city council.
On behalf of the city council.
And I'll second it on behalf of the city council.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Robles and a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson is absent.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion on behalf of the housing authority?
Yes. I'd like to move adoption of two, approve on behalf of the City of Grand Terrace Housing Authority, the agreement between the purchase and sale of real property between the Grand Terrace Housing Authority and the City of Grand Terrace, and the sale of housing authority property. And four, authorize Chair Magna Bo to sign the agreement on behalf of the Grand Terrace Housing Authority.
And also number five, Councilmember Robles.
Okay. Authorize the executive director of seller and the city manager, a buyer, to execute any extensions of required dates and/or minor modifications of the agreement, which do not materially adversely affect the parties' obligations.
And number six.
And?
And number six.
Okay, appropriate 665,000.
The 5,000 from the housing fund.
Okay, so number six, just, and 5,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, could you guys split these up next time?
Yes.
Yes.
And appropriate 5,000 from the housing fund. Or just custom tune, we have like a successor agency redevelopment agency, that they're two agenda items. So we're a little clearer, for the audiences to understand what we're going through.
And I'll second it for the housing authority.
Okay, motion by Boardmember Robles, second by Boardmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with Boardmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Chair Magna Bo voting yes, Vice Chair Wilson is absent.
Thank you. Move on to item 18, which is approve the following, oh, well, consider the following benef, community. benefit, community benefit fund grant applications.
Okay, Mayor, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on the requests from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Central Station Explorer Program, 'cause my grandson is a participant and was one of the contacts on the application.
Okay. Well, we'll do the intro of it, and then we'll have you... Do you need to leave the room?
Well, there's no financial...
Yes, for this one, she does not need to leave the room, but she will not be voting.
Very good, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And so, we had Mr. Todd Nakasaki.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Todd Nakasaki, management analyst in the finance department. The staff report before you is for the community benefits fund grant applications which support the following goals. Goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability through the continuous review of grant applications received. And goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community youth programs. The city has received three applications for the month of December. The first application is from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Central Station Explorer Program to attend the regional explorer competition for the purpose to promote and support youth development programs within the community. The amount they're applying for is two thousand dollars. Funds are to be used for equipment, training, and other costs to attend the regional explorer competition. Our second application is from the Grand Terrace Community Basketball Organization for the purchase of equipment and award of scholarships. The purpose is to promote and support youth athletic programs within the community. The amount they're applying for is one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Funds are to be used for the purchase of two portable basketball backboards and provide five scholarships for low-income families. Our third application for community benefits fund is from the REC Center for the purchase of cheer uniforms. To promote and support youth program, performing arts programs within the community, the amount they're applying for is one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The funds are to be used for the purchase of fifteen cheer uniforms and pom poms. The approved original amount for the community benefits fund is twenty thousand. City council has approved six thousand dollars to date, leaving a balance of fourteen thousand. Should the city council approve the applications before them tonight, this will leave a balance of nine thousand and three hundred dollars in the fund. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have, and representatives from the three organizations are here tonight to answer any questions as well.
All right, thank you for your report. Can we have the representatives come forward and say a few words on their requests? All right, we'll start with the explorer program.
I'm Damian Leon on behalf of Post 508. If this grant's approved, like pointed on the slideshow, we're using for competitions. We go to two competitions a year. One's in June, and that's in Las Vegas, and another one's in Riverside. And we'll use that money for hotel food, so the kids don't have to pay for anything. We also use that for uniforms. This is one of the uniforms we wear, gear, training bouts, any of the other uniforms that we need. And with this grant, it'll help us provide all that stuff, so we won't have to come out of pocket.
All right, any questions on the explorer program at this point? All right, council member Allen.
When is the competition again?
We have one in June, and that's in Las Vegas, sir. And then, we have another one around October, and that's one in Riverside.
Council member Hussey.
So, what do you do during the competition?
We do law enforcement-based scenarios such as building searches, active shooter, vehicle pullovers, pedestrian checks, and the whole, we do team bonding such as team obstacle course, bicycle course, and just law, it's a law enforcement-based scenario competition. And we get great on those. We've, so, we took second, or third place overall in Riverside, and we've been taking trophies home in every competition we've been going to.
How long have you been an explorer?
I've been explorer over a little over five years. I'm currently the captain for the Explorer Bros.
Since your explorer's passions to be, to serve, be San Bernardino County Sheriff's.
Yes, sir.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you guys.
All right, if we could have a representative from the basketball organization.
Good evening. For us, we are looking for the grant to support the, we have low-income kids that wanna come and play with us all the time. We understand parents cannot afford the signup fees, so we look to give five, five kids every year scholarship programs to still allow them to get the jerseys, to experience our full experience. I mean, we're not your average community league. We offer all-stars. We have playoffs and championships. We, and to give these kids that don't, that don't have the opportunity because their parents don't make the money, this helps out a lot. The two new courts that we need is for the developmental league, where they're from five to seven years old. They cannot play on the big courts like the big kids can, so we bring in these courts and we hang them up on the court. They're lower, so the five, seven, five through seven-year-olds get a better feel on the court, so they're, they don't feel like they're just playing on a little pop-up court. These courts are more professional, better rims, better nets. Overall, it's just a better program for our community league.
Any questions of the basketball league? Council member Hussey.
Thank you for coming forward. How much does it cost for registration for each kid?
Registration for us with our uniforms and everything else, you're looking at about one oh five per child.
How many kids do you usually have on there?
We get, this year, we have about seven hundred and twenty signups.
Thank you.
Council member Allen.
So, thanks a lot for your, I know that, Jeremy, that you're a volunteer, and please pass on our thanks to the rest of the adults that do this sort of thing for our kids. And likewise, you know, with those explorers right there, y'all are volunteers in our community too. Thank you for your service. How long does that basketball season last?
We start our opening ceremonies, like I said last council meeting, would love to see you guys there. It'll be January thirteenth is our opening ceremonies. We just started practice this week. We kick it off over there at Pico Park. We go into late March, early April is our closing ceremonies, as well as our all-star and championship games. We get some, we get really good competition there. We've been lucky enough to have majority of your varsity at Grand Terrace has came through our leagues, and we are very happy to see the progression for these kids every year.
Outstanding, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And may we hear from the REC Center representatives. It looks like we have quite a few of you. Are you gonna do a cheer for us?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Thank you for having us. This is our first cheer team here in Grand Terrace that we've formed this season, and it all was sparked by an idea of three of our TAB members, which is our teen advisory board. They wanted to pass on their passion for cheer to the youth of our community, so that's how it got started this season. And so, this is our first cheer team. They have their first performance is Saturday. Their uniforms right now are just the REC Center shirt, and they did actually get a set of pom poms, but we'd like to make an official uniform with a matching set of pom poms for future performances, so that's on their wish list right now. Always an exciting time for the little ones to get suited up and have that sense of belonging on a team, so that's what the request is here for tonight.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the REC Center's application? Council member Hussey.
So, you're gonna be the official Grand Terrace cheerleaders?
We would love that honor if you guys approve.
Just wondering if you could come there to council meeting when we do something, right? You give us a cheer or something?
I think we could arrange a few a year, yeah.
Maybe after every vote that we successfully vote.
They would love to have a purpose to cheer for.
All right, well, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your presentations to us. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so, fellow council members, what would you like to do?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation, an emotion that city council approved the award of two thousand dollars to the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Central Station Explorer Program to attend the upcoming regional explorer competition, purchase equipment and provide training. Also, approve the award of one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to the Grand Terrace Community Basketball Organization for the purchase of equipment and scholarship funds. And to also approve the award of one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars to the REC Center for cheer uniforms.
All right.
Second.
Okay, so, there's a motion for all three by council member Allen and a second by council member Hussey, and council member Robles will be abstaining from item number one. Please vote.
Motion passes with council members Allen, Hussey, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
We look forward to seeing your trophies. We look forward to joining you for your opening ceremonies, and we're looking forward to cheerleaders come and cheering us on. Thank you very much to all of you.
So, will my grandson stand up so they'll know which one you are?
All right. Okay, we will move to item nineteen, which is funding of city of Grand Terrace Silverliner by the San Bernardino Valley's Consolidated Transportation Service Agency or Omnitrans.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, city manager. Tonight, this is for approval of a two-year contract with Omnitrans for senior transportation program. And December sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, Valley Transportation Services, also known as V-Trans at the time, was a nonprofit authorized by Sandbag to act as a consolidated transportation service agency, or CTSA, to help improve mobility for seniors and disabled individuals. They awarded the city a three-year funding agreement for operating expense, for operating expense, and a one-dollar lease for, for a bus to provide senior transportation services, or as we know, we know it as, the Blue Mountain Silverliner. On August first, two thousand sixteen, the city agreement was assigned to Omnitrans as it assumes responsibility of the CTSA. The city assumed the ownership of the bus at the transfer. So, the program performance, so as the staff report indicates, the overall goal was to provide twenty-five weekly rides per week. So, in the initial start of the program in two thousand sixteen, our average was about ten point six. In two thousand seventeen, we reached our goal and exceeded our goal to thirty-six point eight riders per week. And then, current rate, we're currently at about forty-two riders per week. One of the important things that we did was initially, we started out, the program was curb-to-curb service. As the program time extended, we actually ended up going on different excursions, taking seniors to doctor's appointments, to shopping areas, and then also using them for special, special events. So, our new contract is a two-year extension, and it's a total amount of, the contract award is seventy-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. The contract also requires the city to continue its two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal contribution above fifteen thousand dollars annually. So, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Do we have questions of staff at this time? Seen none. Council member Hussey.
So, this is just for our Silverliner, right?
Yes, sir.
So, so, are we paying the bill for seventy-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-two, or is that just for, our bill's only fifteen thousand?
So, our general fund contribution is fifteen thousand. The, the funding component from Omnitrans is the seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Omnitrans doesn't have any issues with those bussing people on, 'cause I know one of the complaints I get from seniors that they take the Omnitrans, it only runs every hour, not every half hour or something, and I talked to you about the issue they had, not picking them up in the front. But I just wanna make sure we're not stepping on anybody's toes and they're happy with this.
No, they're very happy with the program. You know, one of the components is, so, there's Omnitrans, and then there's Access. And one of the goals of our program is to continue the funding, we have to keep our costs at a level that's below the Access cost. And so, when we were having, when we had ten passengers per week, our costs were significantly higher. But now that we've kind of understand the program, how to get, how to get the numbers up there, and a really active participation, the numbers are really growing at the, at the senior center. And so, our numbers are way down, and we meet probably semi-annually with Omnitrans to go over programs. One of our important components was, was really doing the special event programs. And one of the things that people don't realize is, as long as we have seniors as a part of the program, we can still transport, like the Blue Mountain, the Blue Mountain hike, we transported people for, for the Christmas tree lighting program. We actually transported anyone that wanted to ride, so it's not just only seniors, it's the community that can, that can ride, can ride the program.
Well, then, I have a request for the mayor, since she's on the Omnitrans now, if you could see if we could get her ridership, 'cause I'm getting complaints about the only coming up for every hour. Maybe move it up to a half hour, like the regular bus services down the hill, 'cause I have young students that are going to school at a community college, and they have to leave like two hours early just to get there, so I don't know if that's something we could look into.
It would probably help their ridership.
Yeah, it would. Thanks.
Okay. Any further questions of staff? Council member Allen.
So, Mr. Duffy, how many drivers are there?
We have one driver. She's probably thirty hours a week.
Okay, so, the Silverliner, that's, it's operating time period's about thirty hours a week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Oh, is, is she a city employee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council member Hussey? Did you have another question? Okay. All right, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two-year contract with Omnitrans for seventy-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-five cents to fund operational expense of the city of Grand Terrace senior transportation program.
And I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by council member Hussey and a second by council member Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with council members Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes. Mayor McNabb voting yes. Mayor Proton Wilson is absent.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item twenty, which is amendment number one to the professional services agreement with T and B Planning for environmental services. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As indicated by the mayor, this is an amendment to an existing contract we have with T and B Planning. The city council did adopt a, excuse me, approve a purchase, excuse me, I'm sorry, a professional services agreement with T and B Planning for environmental services work related to the Gateway specific plan. And so, T and B is our peer review consultant for the environmental impact report. This amendment would extend the term of the contract to terminate upon completion of the work. We're not putting a termination date. Environmental impact reports do take some time to prepare, and so, rather than have to come back to the council to extend at least the date that it would terminate, we're proposing to just have it terminate when the work's done. We have, in the processing of the environmental impact report, we find that we do need some additional staff augmentation from T and B Planning, more particularly with regard to the technical reports, the analysis of them, and also resolution of some of the potential impacts that are being observed. So, T and B, to provide that staff augmentation, it's approximately thirty-nine hundred dollars more, so the total contract amount would be forty-five thousand five hundred. And when we do environmental impact reports or environmental studies, the developer is responsible for the payment of those costs, and so, the developer pays through a deposit account, and we monitor that and make sure additional funds are provided as needed. And with that, I would ask that the city council approve amendment number one and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
All right, thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff on this item? Okay, seen none. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council and council member Robles.
Make a motion to approve amendment number one to the contract with T and B Planning Incorporated to extend the term of the contract, enhance staff augmentation services, and increase the total compensation by three thousand... increase the total compensation by three thousand nine hundred dollars to a new total of forty-five thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars, and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract and make any amendments as necessary to complete the project.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton, I'm sorry, Mayor McNambo voting yes, and Mayor Proton Wilson is absent.
Thank you. Item twenty-one is an update on the results of the homelessness outreach program connecting homeless individuals with resources to transition from homelessness while supporting the quality of life of the residents of Grand Terrace. Mr. G. Harold Duffy?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. On September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, the city council approved a pilot program using low mod income housing funds to support the Sheriff's Hope Program. During that process, the Sheriff's Department Hope Team trained our existing forty-hour cover deputy to conduct community outreach to the homeless population. So tonight, we have Lieutenant Wolf to give us an update on that program.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public. I'm Lieutenant Doug Wolf, and I oversee patrol operations here for the City of Grand Terrace. With the patrol staffing levels that we face here in Grand Terrace and the calls for service, it's difficult for us to respond appropriately to some of the quality of life issues that are occurring within our community. So after the city's approval or council's approval, we created this position, which is one shift a week, every week. We picked one deputy, and that's Deputy Mike Schlegel, where he works this shift. And we did that to continue with consistency so we can monitor our successes and progress. So that's what Mike will be doing tonight, giving you an overview of this process. Mike Schlegel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. So over the past few months, I've been, well, let me back up a little bit. I've been working in the City of Grand Terrace here for, I'd say about four months now. Lieutenant Wolf brought this to my attention, that the city would be interested in me dealing with some of the quality of life issues throughout the city. As he said, one day a week, aside from my normal patrol duties that come out, attempt to make contact with any homeless transients throughout the city, anybody who may need help, also looking for transient camps. I had been alerted of a few of those as well. Also trying to deal with some of the panhandling and theft issues in our local retail establishments. So as Lieutenant Wolf said, I'll be going over a few things today of what we've done in that time. So our primary objective was to locate any local transients in need of assistance, locate some transient camps, offer assistance, and organize cleanups of those camps. Also work with the local businesses regarding theft and panhandling, and assist code enforcement as needed throughout the city. This is an overview of the stats from the program that I took from September first through October thirty-first, which was the first phase of this program. I was able to contact eleven different subjects throughout the city, some of them multiple times, some of them were just passers-through. Within those contacts, we had a total of eight arrests. I had five arrests for warrants, one arrest for drug-related issues, one with a weapon, and one for public intoxication. I located a total of five transient or homeless encampments throughout the city, visited them multiple times. Some of them had only took one visit and we were able to clear them out, get it cleaned up, and it wasn't any issue. A few of them, it took a little bit longer because they were larger, a little bit more of a mess, so took a few attempts, but we definitely have been able to successfully clean up just about everything throughout the city. I was able to work with the Hope Team on getting in touch with one of our local transients who has recently been added into the Hope Team's system and is in the process of getting assistance. Also, we had, everybody knows down Mount Vernon, below Vista Grande by the dog park, there were some issues down there. Had to work with the City of Colton because apparently part of that area was theirs, part of it was ours. So I was able to work with the City of Colton and get that area cleaned up as well. We also had a large issue with the Cage Park Complex over off of Main and Taylor, and we have recently gotten that one taken care of as well. The property owners went in there, cleaned that up, and they now have private security throughout the area, making sure nobody enters that vacant building. So this is a picture of a couple of the camps. The top three pictures are going to be located off of Barton Road, just south of the Honey Hill area. And the bottom four pictures are going to be the camp that was shared by us and Colton PD below Vista Grande off of Mount Vernon. So these are pictures that I took when I first made contact with these camps, was first alerted of them. As far as the camps we located, Barton Road and Canal, actually in the area you guys were discussing earlier on making some changes with, there was one person that I located living there. He actually is a resident of the City of Grand Terrace and had been kicked out of his house apparently and just decided he wanted a spot to stay. I contacted him, was able to get him to clean up his items, and he left on his way. Haven't had an issue since. Main Street and Taylor, the Cage Park Complex, as I said, that area was cleaned up, the building was completely cleaned out, their whole property was cleaned up. At one point, I drove by and saw a very large pile of trash and debris and leftover items that people had been using while they were living inside that complex. They now have private security onsite, and I have seen them patrolling the area fairly often as I'm going through. Barton Road below Honey Hill, that was one of the pictures that I showed you. It was when I first contacted, there were two people living there, a lot of trash. It was one of the larger encampments that I've seen before. It's kind of hidden, it's going to be on the west side of Barton Road, just below the Honey Hill area. And until I was alerted by code enforcement, I didn't even know it was there because it's hidden so well, but it's right on the border of Grand Terrace and Colton, but it is ours. Also, Mount Vernon below Vista Grande, we also have a current encampment on Grand Terrace Road and Vivienda. There's a couple residential pads right there on the northwest corner, just below that on the hillside. We have a small encampment right there where somebody's living, which happens to be the subject that we're working on getting housed currently. And as soon as that gentleman gets housed, we'll be able to go in and clean that up. So these are a couple after shots of the same encampments that I showed a picture of before. The center one is going to be below Vista Grande off of Barton Road. The ones surrounding completely are going to be off of, I'm sorry, Vista Grande and Mount Vernon was the middle one. The other ones are Barton Road below Honey Hill. I was there when a crew came in, they brought a big Birtec dumpster that you can see there in the top-left corner. Crew came in, cleaned up all the trash, cut back all the brush, shrubbery that kind of hid everybody from view, cleaned all that out. That way, we won't have any more issues, and I believe they filled that dumpster to the top with trash and debris left behind by the people that were living there. So as far as people that we've been able to actually assist, like I said, we have one subject who has been in contact with the Hope Team. Department of Behavioral Health also came out, spoke with this gentleman, and he is in the process of being housed. Unfortunately, it's not something we can snap our fingers with, and he just gets to go move in somewhere. But I have been in contact with him multiple times a week, and he's signed his paperwork, and we're basically just waiting for a spot to open up for him to go into. He's the one that occupies that leftover transient camp spot on Grand Terrace Road and Vista Grande. So once he does get housed, I've already talked to him, he's gonna either leave me a note or the Hope Team is going to contact me to let him know that he's gone and that anything he leaves behind can be cleaned up by the city or anybody who's able to come through and clean it up. Subject number two, I've contacted him multiple times, I've arrested multiple times, he does have a few issues and has recently agreed to accept help from the Sheriff's Department, from the Hope Team, from Behavioral Health. We're just waiting for Department of Behavioral Health and the Hope Team to actually go get him logged into their system and start working on getting him housing as well. Going forward from here, our goal is to continue to locate any subjects needing assistance or any camps. I've been working with code enforcement on other issues throughout the city, such as parking vehicles that have been in one place for too long, which I know is a big issue also with having big rigs parked on city streets. Been trying to talk to those people and make sure all that stuff gets moved along. And also through community contact, determine other quality of life concerns that anybody has out there for us. I'm very committed to this program and making sure that this city is a good city for you guys to live in. I spend four or five days a week in this city, so I spend more time here than I do at my own house. So I am very invested in making sure that the city stays as nice as I've seen it so far. If you guys have any questions or concerns at any time, please feel free to contact me. I left my station phone number up there, but also my email address is the best way to contact me. So if there are issues in the future, I'm not going to know what's going on throughout the city if I'm not made aware of the issues. Lieutenant Wolf has been great at passing on information that you guys have concerns with. So again, if you'd like to bypass him, if it's something that I can handle, I would be more than happy to handle it for you guys and do everything I can to help you guys out.
Thank you, Deputy Schlegel.
Thank you.
Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Deputy, for all your hard work you do for our city. I know it's an ongoing task and, you know, taking care of that. But one question I have is, not clean yet, the camp visits on Grand Terrace Road still occupied? And you visit four times. How many people are homeless shelters that we have there, or how many people?
Just one person.
Just one person. And so what's the issue on the still occupied? He's just, we can't find him, relocate him, or we can't give him assistance?
Right, we're waiting, he is on a list right now to get housed through the county of San Bernardino. Unfortunately, it's one of those things that I can't force him to leave, I can't make him pick up his stuff and go unless somebody's there to say he's trespassing on my property. I can't do a lot, so I'm trying to get him help instead of just moving him along to another area.
Yeah, I realize that, and I realize that the ACLU put a, you know, damper on everything trying to help these people, because I know a lot of these people can't make decisions even to, you know, tie their shoes. And you see by, you know, not saying anything bad about, but you see the trash and biohazard that's left. And it's unfortunate, we can't, you know, help them. They need help, you know? And just wondering if this person right here, you know, if he has adequate shelter for winters coming, you know, if he has jackets or anything like that, you know? I know he's down on his luck, but, you know, we want to make sure that, does the whole program cover stuff like that? You guys take, give him jackets or something through the night, or do you have stuff like that available for him?
Absolutely, we do. The gentleman question is fairly proud, is the best way I could put it. I've offered to put him up in a hotel for a night, I've tried to help him myself. The Hope Team has offered to take him to shelters. He does not want to leave until he's going to get more, something a little more permanent than a one-night stay somewhere. When I spoke to him about trying to go for one night, he accused me of trying to kick him out of the city that he's lived in for so long. And that was not my goal, my goal is not to upset him or make him feel bad, so I...
Well, yeah, I understand, you know, we're trying to help him and some don't want help, and that's why I was going back on ACLU, you know, just to help him out. All right, that's all I question, I just want to know what the status on that was.
Yeah, see, we're actively working with him. Like I said, I contact him multiple times a week to check on him. He calls me by first name, I call him by first name, so I do my best to help him out.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's great that, you know, you guys are, you know the community and you know the homeless problems on that, because I know since you're patrolling, I mean, you have seen the increase of homelessness coming through or just bypassing through?
I feel like the majority is passing through the city as far as homeless wanting to sleep within the city or find a place to reside in the city. It seems like it's more pass-through. We do have a lot of people who come into the City of Grand Terrace to commit crimes, steal from the local stores, the convenience stores, Stater Brothers. I feel like they come in from other areas, it's not necessarily people who are staying inside the City of Grand Terrace. I have seen an uptick at Stater Brothers lately of theft. I feel though that has a lot to do with the holidays and it's something that kind of comes and goes. As far as transients, since I started the program, I feel like it's gone down. I only see the same two, maybe three people anymore when I used to see about six or eight people.
Well, one of my concerns on that is I know we're by Veterans Freedom Park, they have a group of trees by our other baseball diamond, and I know about four years, my first count of council, we went there and they had mattresses and everything. My concern is the high school students going through there, and if there's a homeless encampment, you know, what that could do. But I appreciate, you know, it's always good when you have somebody who, you know, knows the area and knows the people first name, but, you know, I'm concerned too about the transits just coming through and stopping here to shop, you know, five-figure discount or cause hate and havoc, and I'm worried about our kids when they, because I seen one one time walking over by the middle school, and my middle school's still going. So that's my main concern, is public safety too. I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Deputy, for all your work you do for us. How do you locate the camps, so the individuals?
I usually look for areas where there's not a lot of people, open fields, areas where there's a field, maybe a pocket of trees. That's usually where they want to stay. A lot of times, they'll stay out of sight because they figure out of sight, out of mind. I know down off of Vivienda near Lockadina, there's the train tracks. I've spotted some people down there because there's not a lot of foot traffic or vehicle traffic over in that area. So I kind of try to stay in the areas where I think to myself, oh, where would I want to go if I didn't want to get caught sleeping somewhere? So just try and use whatever instinct I can. Other than that, I've worked with code enforcement. When they've been in and out of different areas, they'll notify me, hey, you know, we saw a tent set up over here, can you go check it out? Absolutely. I go check out, see what's going on, if I can help the people out and move them along, that's the best way to go.
Okay, so if this gets approved, what we're have before us this evening, will it continue to be eight hours through June, like it's scheduled has been, you know? Eight hours, is it eight hours a week that we get it extra?
Yes.
And so that's what it'll be, eight hours a week? And is that scheduled randomly, or is that, is there one set time, you're going to be here every week at that particular time to look for the homeless?
No, it's going to be randomly. I come in different days throughout the week. Currently, I'm assigned here on the weekend, so I come on one of my off days. I have either Tuesday through Friday off or Wednesday through Friday off right now, so I'll choose one of those days, try and do a different day each week. And then also I scatter the time. Sometimes I'll come in early in the morning, which is usually easier to find transients when they're at their camps, or in the afternoon and the evening is when I usually end up dealing with a lot more of the theft-related issues. So I do randomize my time on those days.
Okay, yeah, thanks. So in our report, one of the items that was discussed is the ten million dollars of that heap money that San Bernardino County got. And my question is, is can that, is that ten million dollars, any of that available to be used to, is it available as grant, or can the city access it like one, you know, in any way to use to enhance this program even more?
I have to pass that over to Lieutenant Wolf here. Good evening. That money is already slated for our Hope Program for the most part. I'm not saying in the future, that might not be something that we can possibly, or you guys can possibly tap into, but that would have to be something that we plan, you know, very early in advance.
I see, okay. Yeah, thank you.
And if I can add one other thing too, is with this whole program, is that, of course Deputy Schlegel's doing a great job, but even more importantly, the partnership that he's created with the city staff to help not just clean up these encampments, but also make these places a little more undesirable to camp, i.e. trimming the trees back, cleaning it out to where it's, it's not a hiding place anymore. So that has also been a key point in this whole process as well.
Thanks a lot, Lieutenant. And do we hold the property owners responsible for any of that, like if trees have to be trimmed back or anything?
Well, right now, we're just making sure we get it done, and if the city wants to reach out to them for reimbursement, of course, they're welcome to do so, but I think our goal right now is just try to fix the problem.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hesse, you have a question?
So you're doing all that in eight hours, is that a sufficient amount of time during the week, or?
To have more time honestly would be better. With more time, you can do more. I try and incorporate it into my daily patrol duties throughout the weekend when I'm working. But obviously with more time, more can be done.
So for eight hours a day until June, it's, Mr. Duffy or Cynthia, it's $19,000?
Roughly, sir.
So if we had 16 hours a week until June, that'd be $38,000?
Yes, sir.
If we request that?
Yes, sir. And one of the things that we're, we're doing is that, because we're using low mod funds based on Assembly Bill 346, we started out with a pilot program so we could move forward. Once we get the, once we get the results, we were going to come back to the council at the end of the year again. And so as we do our new budgetary process, we can come back if we want to increase the number, number of hours. So we initially started out with, you know, $7,200. We came back, and this is our report back, and so the council did appropriate $26,000 on December, on September the 11th, 2018. So the request today is to, to approve, to allow us to spend the rest of that money, that $19,000.
So in the future, we're looking at maybe increasing this?
That's, that's the desire-
If we have a budgetary?
If that's the desire of the council, yes.
All right. Also what Mr. Councilmember Allen talked about, and I know we talked about before, the heap, the homeless emergency aid program. Can you highlight about that program and, you know, what the city's responsibility would be if we had to do something like that?
Sure, yes, sir. So the, the heap program really is a $500 million block grant from the state of California. And the counties, San Bernardino County received $10 million. The program's actually separated out to multiple levels. It's really for cities that are a population of 300,000 or more. And they also give continuum of care, and it's what the county's operating, operating as. And so there are a number of nonprofit organizations that are providing services. For example, we received a request, then we put the attachment in the, in this report, request for, from multiple agencies that are providing services to the homeless. But unless the city participates in terms of providing a letter of support, they may not be able to provide or get reimbursed for the, for the services for someone who's in Grand Terrace. So what we did was they allowed the city manager to provide a letter of support. So now, much like the county's Hope Program, one of the things the Hope Program does is they provide resources once they make the contact with the homeless individuals. And so as part of the resources, this heap money is for rapid rehousing and paying electricity bills. It's to help people that are homeless, but also to prevent some of those that are, people before they become homeless. So the, the heap program is multifaceted, and there are a number of opportunities that cities can apply for to be, to be, to access those funds. But one of the serious concerns that most cities have is that you have to designate yourself to have a homeless, a housing crisis. And that triggers some land use decisions, that cities don't want to, to have the state come in and do that. So our option has been to support those nonprofit agencies that are providing those services by providing them a letter of support, saying, yes, please help our citizens. So anyone that gives a Grand Terrace address can get assistance from those nonprofit agencies.
Thank you.
All right. Further questions? Councilmember Allen?
The, the funds that were, were used originally to pay for the Hope Program, the $26,000 that was appropriated, what other entities are eligible to access those funds? What else can those funds be used for other than the Hope Program?
Sure. Those funds are primarily, primarily used for the low mod income housing asset fund for the program. And in the past, the city had a first-time homebuyer program. Some cities do help in refurbishment for, for low-income and senior housing. One of the things that we are scheduled to do in February is to come back to the council and, and convene, I'm sorry, not the council, but to convene the housing successor agency or the housing authority and kind of lay out to the, to the board, the assets that we have, the existing programs that we have, and a menu of other opportunities that are available. So staff can get an idea in terms of what we want to do with those low mod funds, and then we can come up with a program that the executive board can approve. So primarily, those funds are for housing. But with the passage of Assembly Bill 346, they allowed us to use it for rapid rehousing and assistance for homeless outreach.
Okay, thanks. So I, I remember in the past, we, when we were offering this first-time homebuyer assistance, and is that not something that's available anymore in the city at this time? We don't have that program right now?
At this time, we don't, we don't have an active program. We do have loans that we, that we issue.
Right, but, okay.
I think Councilmember Allen, that the housing prices became too high for it to make sense at the time. Because the city used to buy and refurbish homes and then sell them.
And I can also recall there were times whenever the city would offer assistance to some homeowners for, you know, exterior renovation to, you know, make, bring it up to code or something like that if they couldn't. And so we're not doing that either, are we?
Not at this time.
Yeah. Because I would-
So, Councilmember Allen, what is before us is the consideration of the extension of this Hope Program. And as, as Mr. Duffy mentioned, he will be coming back and we will talk more extensively about what we can do with the Housing Successor Agency. Did you have any more questions about this particular item before us tonight?
Not anymore.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? All right, any requests to speak on this item? Bobby Forbes. Try it again.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing what you're doing. I call the city and code enforcement often for things in town. And with respect to the gentleman that we're speaking with without a name, when I talked to him about this last week, he seemed very excited. And I will tell everyone that he had a home here in town longer than he's been homeless. And that's why he is so proud to be here. And he's not really a nuisance to the community like many are that come through town. And so I help him as often as I can, and I know that there's other people in town that do as well. He's basically my neighbor and has been even before he lost his home. So thank you for helping him and being persistent, because he has good days and bad days like many people do on the street. If you're not a little bit uncomfortable mentally when you hit the street, you will be after a while. It just gets to you, I see it. So thank you very much. I would like to request, when you are checking for homeless, please check our building next to Bank of America. We're having issues with people sleeping on the landings. I no longer can work at night because of it. So it's become a problem for me with my work. And if you can just periodically think of that, I would be ever so appreciative. Thank you very much.
Any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I don't remember what it was. No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you Councilmember Robles. Would you like to make a motion on the update on, actually what we're looking at is extending, extending-
I would like to move the recommendation to extend existing 90-day pilot program with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department Hope Team for outreach services to the homeless community and authorizing the executive director of the Housing Successor Agency to execute a contract with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department in the amount of $19,000 for continued outreach to the homeless unit till June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Robles, a second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, and the Mayor voting yes.
Thank you, we'll move to, thank you so much Deputy Schlegel. I appreciate you being here in our city.
Absolutely, thank you for allowing me to work here.
Move on to item 22, which is consideration of an urgency ordinance and regular ordinance establishing regulations for street vendors pursuant to Senate Bill Number 946.
Thank you Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Before the council, there's two ordinances, one, an urgency as indicated by the mayor. This item does support goal number two, to maintain public safety by establishing regulations for sidewalk vendors. Just a bit of background, the California Legislature adopted Senate Bill 946, which becomes effective on January 1st, 2019. And this Senate bill will preempt local governments from prohibiting sidewalk vendors within the city. The law does limit the scope of local regulation. And if the city wants to be able to regulate sidewalk vendors, then the city needs to adopt an ordinance. And because this ordinance says, excuse me, the Senate bill does become effective January 1st, our city attorney's office has recommended that we adopt both an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance. So this, this bill would allow sidewalk vendors, this is just a few examples of the type of vendors that would be permitted. So sidewalk vendors that have non-motorized type of carts or devices would be permissible under certain regulations. We do have a few definitions that I just wanted to go through real quick. So the sidewalk vendor means a person who sells food or merchandise from a push cart, stand, display, pedal-driven cart, wagon showcase, rack or other non-motorized conveyance, or from one person upon a public sidewalk or, or other pedestrian path. So again, it's very broad as to what can be used, but as long as it's not motorized, it would be applicable and permissible. A roaming sidewalk vendor would mean a sidewalk vendor who moves from place to place and stops onto, excuse me, and stops only to complete a transaction. Then you have the fixed stationary sidewalk vendor who would also fall under this proposed ordinance. The agenda report does identify a number of regulations and restrictions that staff has proposed in this ordinance. But just to talk about a few, so the, the proposed ordinance would prohibit vending in residential zones between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Would not allow a vendor to leave their, their device, their, their push cart or their stationary stand on a public street. You can't leave trash or litter from, from, that's generated from your particular use. You can't leave it from the sidewalk that you were vending at. This would limit the solicitor conducting a business with two persons that are in vehicles. So we would be discouraging vendors on the corner trying to sell whatever their product is to people in cars. Also would limit and not allow the use of amplified speakers, or would also limit the generation of loud or raucous noise. There's also limitations as far as proximity to operating near fire hydrants, transit stops, or residential driveways. It would also limit the ability for a vendor to operate in a city park when the city has an agreement with a concessions operator. And then also, if there's a special event that the city approved, then the, the vendor could not operate within 500 feet of that particular event during the duration of the event. And so those are just some of the items that I'm highlighting, but there are quite a number of them within the packet. The ordinance also identifies the fines that would be issued to anybody prohibiting the, the ordinance. The vendor does, is required to get a business license. And in addition, if the, the, if the vendor is selling food, they would be subject to health permit as well. So the staff's recommendation is to adopt the urgency ordinance regulating sidewalk vendors, and that would become effective immediately. And our second recommendation is to introduce an ordinance regulating sidewalk vendors, and that would come back to the council for a second reading and adoption. Also, staff is available for any comments or to respond to any questions. And our city attorney is also more versed in this particular ordinance and the law could also respond. Thank you.
Thank you Director Molina. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
What about the occasion, you know, you see people selling flowers and balloons for Valentine's or Mother's Day? I mean, you see that happen, is that okay?
Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Madam Mayor. Yes, that would be subject to this ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I'll make that with a caveat if it's on sidewalk. If it's on private property and the property owner has allowed it, that would be subject to different-
So if it's on their private property and they're not touching the sidewalk, then they're all right?
But they would still be subject to zoning and business license requirements.
Well, yeah, I know a couple of places that we have that sell balloons and flowers and stuff, and it's been like that for years. Now, I know, understand the food vendors and everything like that, because they come in here and the first thing that comes out of their mouth, well, I thought it was in Riverside, because they have a permit on there.
Sure.
And they know they're not from Riverside, or they're, we're not Riverside. I was just worried, you know, about them, because I'm sure that question's going to be asked and we're going to be told that, well, I can't buy my mother anything for Mother's Day now, so I'm just wondering. Thanks.
No problem.
Any further questions? Councilmember Allen?
What part of our other, uh, street vending ordinance has been amended by this one, or is going to be amended by this?
So there is a section that's proposed to be amended. It, um, thank you for asking that question. So it is our chapter 5.64 that regulates peddling, hocking, and soliciting. And so packet page 476, does identify the modifications that would be done to that particular chapter, section 5.64.060, that talks about scope of license and hours. And so it's been modified to strike out anything that contradicts with the sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk vending ordinance.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we amended this section just to ensure consistency between the solicitation ordinance and, and these new provisions. I will note that we do plan to review the solicitation ordinance as well in the new year and bring back that ordinance for council consideration.
And so this, even like Girl Scouts, cookie sales and that sort of thing?
That is correct, yes. Any solicitation.
Okay. Why, why is this urgency since it, I mean, the state had it all year long?
Uh, that is true. I'm new here, so I wanted just to ensure that, that the city was protected by ensuring that we get the ordinance in place before the end of the year.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hesse, I know you have a question, but I believe Councilmember Robles has a question, and I'd like her to go.
So my, my understanding from following the state legislature, that this kind of has to do with the fact that folks that aren't here with legal status, that are selling food or other things, when they're arrested, that becomes an issue that would help extradite them from our country. Is that correct?
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'll give you a little bit, bit of background. The bill was initiated by Senator Lara. He represented Currie, Bell, Bell Gardens, Linwood, and various other cities in the Southeast District. And, and yes, there were a lot of issues regarding immigration and those individuals trying to make ends meet. And in noting in the actual legislation, there is provisions here saying that the safety and welfare of the general public is promoted by encouraging local agencies to support and properly regulate sidewalk vending. And, and I'll even note this, the legislature finds and declares that all of the following, sidewalk vending provides important entrepreneurship and economic development opportunities to low-income and immigrant communities. So yes, that was part of the reasoning for this legislation.
But, but more than that, as far as making an income, the, the urgency was if you have so many street vending issues, and you have a misdemeanor on your record, and you're subject to having obstacles to when a future- having obstacles to when, of future times that you're trying to legalize your status, that that's a mark against you. So this was a wholesale, I'm not agreeing, saying Lara is not my favorite legislator or soon-to-be insurance commissioner. But I just want to put this in the context it possibly needs to be in. And just, you know, on a personal note, my great-grandparents came to this country when it was an open border. They were legal residents, but it was a different time, the early nineteen hundreds. I mean, you look at the streets of New York and everybody was vending and hocking things. And, you know, and it's like, well, I'm getting my nails done, because in the American US culture, we're not accustomed, everybody out there hocking stuff. But in Mexico, there's no social, social net, there's no welfare. You don't work, you don't eat. So everybody tries to figure out some little trinket or whatever. So I'm getting my nails done, and people want to sell you stuff. And I'm like, I didn't come here to buy stuff, I came here to relax and get my nails done. The, but the other thing that, that, you know, in, in, with my family is, my grandmother was abandoned by her husband, and so she sold tamales. And in San Antonio, they had a market square. Women went over there, they sold their tamales, there was no, you know, foods, food and safety, whatever. And she was able to, to raise her family. And I'm, you know, I, I visited my sister-in-law in Fontana, and it is just kind of, because again, our culture, our American culture is when somebody's with an ice cream thing, selling corn. It's, it's different, it's not, it's kind of against our, our comfort zone. But, you know, I, I'm just offering the point that we have all kinds of competing political philosophies right now. We don't have control of the state legislature. There's a particular bent right now. It sounds to me like we're trying with this ordinance to try to put some common sense, um, issues in place, like not being at a park and all that kind of thing. And I would just like to see it, see it come back. And I understand the need that, that the governor did this, it wasn't expected, it was something he did on the way out, out the door. And, and we have to be ready, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Councilmember Hussey, you had a question?
All right, well, this is part of what Councilmember Allen said, you know, you said that the Girl Scouts would be under this ordinance. And I was wondering, you know, when we had the firework booth, would that be under this ordinance? Because it says, you know, stationary sidewalk vendor, and they always have the firework booth inside the Stater Brothers warehouse. And you're saying that they need to have a conditional permit, I mean, they have permits sometimes, but this is like with the Girl Scouts, you know, the Stater Brothers always authorized, they even like the popcorn. But can we as a city put like amendment in there, any five oh one Cs? And if the business gives an okay, that we're able to just bypass that?
If I, if I may.
Director Molina.
Councilmember Hussey, so for, the, this ordinance would regulate vending on our public sidewalks. And so the firework stands on private property where they get the proper permits. And so that's not applicable to the ordinance before the council. That's, that's that separate permit process that, that the city attorney was mentioning.
All right, I understand that, thank you. But back again, back to the Girl Scouts as example, selling cookies in front of Stater Brothers. I mean, it's a food market, I mean, and they gave a permission for it, I mean, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, but again, that's private property. So to the extent it's on private property, that's subject to a whole separate set of regulations. It's only to the extent that they are actually on the sidewalk.
Didn't you say that it depends on their user permit, or their user?
It depends on where they're located.
All right. Cookies at Stater Brothers is probably an okay.
It would not be.
If they get approved.
It would not be subject to this ordinance.
Okay.
It would be subject to zoning, and yes, if they get approved.
I just want to know, because I can only buy so many cookies, I don't want to supplement their, their non-cookie sale from Stater Brothers. All right, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Allen.
Were this not to be approved tonight, Ms. Molina? And the state's plan went into effect on January one. What's the, is there any major difference between ours ordinance and what this would happen if the state ordinance went into effect? Any major differences?
City Attorney, watch your mouth.
Currently, we do not have any regulations governing sidewalk vending. So we would be subject to whatever the state law provides. And in this case, we are more or less mirroring what state law provides, but tailoring it to what our needs are. So the state law allows us to adopt reasonable time, place, and manner regulations, so long as they are for the health and safety, welfare of the community, and that's what we've done here.
Mr. City Attorney, if we do not adopt this, do we lose the opportunity to have something tailored to our city?
And that is the argument, yes. The state law isn't exactly clear on that. Most of the city attorneys are taking the position to be on the safe side, adopt something now, so that there is no argument that we waived any right to regulate it in the future.
So, so ours, ours is no more erroneous, will be no more erroneous on the vendor's process than the state's would be?
That is correct, we are consistent with state law.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any people wishing to speak on this item? Thank you.
Bobby Forbes, Lemon Eight Fifty Burns Avenue, please adopt something regarding this. If you remember, when they used to sell oranges and roses and stuff, and cars at Grand Terrace Road, Mount Vernon, and Canal, it creates a traffic hazard. The little pushcarts show up in my neighborhood because of the Grand Terrace Mobile Home Park. They're selling corn, fruit, whatever else, ice creams, I guess, that get sold on them. But it's random, they get dropped at the corner, and then they're picked up there, or they walk off from there. But they're going there because they have clientele there, they're not all over town. I don't see them anywhere else in town anyway, except in that, that neighborhood. Also, I would like to know about the ice cream trucks. There's different ones that target Grand Terrace, and they're on the streets. And I would imagine they're supposed to have city license, but I doubt that they do. So I wonder if that could be addressed as far as just knowing whether or not they have li, if you know if they have licenses or not. I doubt they do, but that's my input. I know my neighborhood gets hit by the little pushcarts. I'm not a purchaser, because that's a little foreign to me, but, you know, the ice cream truck once in a while gets my money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to City Attorney. Did you want to clarify about ice cream trucks?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. That would be subject to the vehicle code. And cities can regulate time, place, and manner of vending from vehicles upon any street. So we would be able to adopt a separate ordinance covering that.
All right, thank you. And I do know that there was at least one ice cream truck that had a license. I don't know if they do now, but I do remember seeing one before. Okay, what would council like to do with this urgency ordinance and ordinance? Anything?
Well, I just wanted to ask our, our council. Going again to the state, and, and we're, we're a general law city. So we're a subunit of the state, so the state makes a lot of laws for us. So they're making a law for us, and you're advising us that there's some tailoring we can do within that law, and that we ought to take advantage of that before this takes effect. And just talking out loud, if this, if we don't do anything and this takes effect, do we kind of circumvent ourselves for, you know, we just kind of went along with what the state did? We knew there was a deadline coming and we didn't act?
Madam Mayor, yes, that's correct. I mean, there's an argument that we waived our right, in essence, to regulate. So my preference is that the council at least have an opportunity to add some regulations to the code. We can always come back and, and revisit them in the future when we do the solicitation ordinance, or review it after a year, see if there's any issues out there we have not touched. But so long as we have something on the books, I think we're, we're consistent with state law.
Okay, well then, in that case, then I would like to move the recommendation to read by title only, and wait for the reading, and introduce an ordinance of the city council in the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending section five point six four point zero six zero of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, and adding chapter nine point zero five to Title Nine of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish regulations for sidewalk vendors. And to read by title only, wait for the reading, and adopt an emergency, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending section five point six four zero six zero of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, and adding chapter nine point zero five to Title Nine of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish regulations for sidewalk vendors.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Robles, and a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, and the mayor voting yes.
Thank you. We have item twenty-three, which is the Fund Balance Designation Implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Fifty-four. Ms. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Cynthia Fortune, representing the Finance Department. The staff report supports city goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations, and providing city council scheduled updates on the city's fiscal condition. So this is in reference to the city's fund balance designations, specifically the general funds. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that set all the government accounting principles, issued statement number sixty-four, which modified fund balance reporting. Fund balance refers to the difference between the assets, what the city owns, and the liabilities, what the city owes. So when they redid the designation, there were five categories they wanted identified in our financials. First one being non-spendable, and these can only be spent if and when approved. An example is an endowment fund or developer deposits. Second category is restricted, funds that are collected and restricted only for a specific use. These, these normally are our special revenue funds, our gas tax funds, our development impact fees, our bond proceeds. Now, our third category is what is for the city council to consider, to commit the general fund's fund balance. Only the highest decision-making authority, and that's our city council, can commit fund balance. And the four categories undercommitted are contingencies, community services, public safety, and fixed assets. The other two designations is assigned, meaning the city manager or the finance director can assign fund balance. And the last category is unassigned. Just for the council's reminder, our general fund is actually composed of seven different funds. And we broke out these other sub-funds to make it, to provide council the ability to track any revenues and expenditures that are coming within these sub-funds. So what is the required fund balance? Gas B or the Government Standard Board requires two months of operating revenues or expense. For fiscal year eighteen nineteen, our two-month minimum requirement of fund balance would be about nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So the major expenditures that we're expecting to see this current year and next year is to actually use the two million in bond proceeds that we received from the successor agency. It is more detailed in the staff report, but I wanted to provide the, the next three years' projected fund balance for the general fund. So for seventeen eighteen, we, we're continuing to actually finish our financial transactions in our closer books. We are going to project a fund balance of three point three million. As I mentioned earlier, in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we're going to spend about a million dollars of the bond proceeds. We'll bring it down to two point three million. And in nineteen twenty, we're going to again spend that additional million dollars in bond proceeds to bring it down to one point three. As stated earlier, the minimum requirement is nine hundred and thirty-three thousand. As you can see, all three years have met that minimum required fund balance. So what they're asking is of that fund balance, that the city council approve the designation. So as I mentioned, in eighteen nineteen, we'd spend one million. So by the end of eighteen nineteen, there will only be one million to restrict in bond proceeds, with the rest in contingencies, community services, and fixed assets. By the end of nineteen twenty, see, the restriction is zero, because we would have spent all two million in bond proceeds, bringing now our fund balance to one point three. So staff is recommending that city council adopt the resolution twenty eighteen dash XX, revising the general fund's fund balance commitments for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you for your report. So the revising of the fund balances is the, is the change in the naming of them, correct?
Correct.
Or how they are designated, how they refer to, but not anything different than has been allocated prior by this council?
That is correct.
Okay, what questions do you have of staff at this time? Councilmember Robles.
No, I just would like to see on a future agenda item, a discussion on our fund balance, and some economic forecasts, and some discussion about our unfunded pension liability.
Mr. Duffy, you have that, right?
Oh, I will, I can truly go back.
Would you repeat those items?
Yeah, I'd like to see a discussion about our, actually, our,
Fund balance.
Fund balance for contingencies. And, and, now you tripped me up.
Definitely unfunded liabilities.
Yeah, and our unfunded liabilities, with, having to do with pensions, because, and some economic forecasting. Maybe, because what I'm afraid of is all this discussion that we're having with the new governor and at the county level, and is that there, we have eight years of economic growth, there's going to be a bottom. I'd like to see, you know, a discussion if we're prepared for it. And we haven't discussed, other than childcare, which we, we addressed, we haven't discussed our unfunded pension liability for existing employees. And that's a big driver of rising costs for, for, for government. And I think we need to kind of be proactive on that and have a discussion.
Absolutely.
Any further questions? All right, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that the council adopt a resolution twenty eighteen dash XX, revising the general fund's fund balance commitments for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, year end, and FOI twenty nineteen twenty, operating budget.
I second the motion.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Allen, and a second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, and the mayor voting yes.
Thank you. Next is City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just before I start that communications, I want to make sure that I've captured some of the items that the council mentioned today, or tonight. There was a desire to have dialogue with the regional transportation services regarding responsibility for bus stop benches between Omni-Trans and, and the city, to try to make sure that we have adequate services. In addition to that, just, as Councilperson Robles mentioned, future discussions for the fund balance contingency, unfunded liabilities relating to our pension liabilities, and economic forecasting for two thousand, and, well, the next five years, we'll do the forecasting for that. So I only have one item for my report back tonight. And that is really, as the mayor and council are aware, that we have a hundred and five million dollar interchange project. And while everyone can see the, the project that's happening, I was surprised that a number of residents are not aware of the design that we have, the, the design that is going to be moving forward. And so as part of our economic development process, we prepared a three-D video demo of the actual design of the interchange project at completion. And it was a phase one, and then phase two would be the Commerce Way expansion. And so that three-D video demo has been sent to every developer that I've worked with over the last year and a half. the last year and a half, to let them know that this is what's going to happen, this is going to be the mobility, and the options that are, that are available. And so, but having talked to, as I said earlier, a number of citizens that aren't aware of the final design and the project, we decided that it's time for us to release this video to, on our social media, and on Channel 3, so people are aware of the project. So we put together just a quick little demo for you. That concludes my report, Mayor.
That will be beautiful when it's done. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. All right, we have no closed session, so we are at the end of our agenda, we will move to adjournment. The next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to you all, and thank you all for your being here tonight. We are adjourned.